13th Select Board Meeting, we have with us tonight Erin Underhill and Craig Schultz, the other two Select Board members, and Mike Gazinski, our Town Administrator, and Karen Beray, our Town Operations Officer. So, with that, also a note of disclosure, having just come back from vacation, my mind is a deer, so please bear with me as I try to figure out what I'm doing today. So, I don't have any specific announcements. Mike, Karen, are you aware of any?
No.
No, no specific announcements this evening.
Nothing from Mr. McVeigh or anyone? Okay. Then I guess what we will start with are the scheduled appointments and hearings, and we're going to start with the appointment of the Team Coordinator for Recreation. So, I will defer that to Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if our Recreation Director is on the line or not, I don't want to preempt her if she is, but...
She is under the name Ron Jackson this evening.
Right, oh, okay.
I'm like, who's Ron Jackson? She's under an alias, and Erin is here as well, the appointee.
Yes, we see that. And was the team... And was the team... Turn muted, okay.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I will turn it over briefly to Ron Jackson, or AKA Chris Bogany, to talk a little bit about the Team Program Coordinator and the outstanding candidate we'd like the Board to ratify for appointments this evening. So, Chris, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the position and the person we'd like to put forward for it.
I will talk a little bit, sure. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties, as you can see, I'm Ron Jackson, and my audio is super bad right now, so I apologize. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the best I can. So, as you know, we applied for a part-time Team Program Coordinator, and it was approved at the last town meeting, funded through the marijuana funds, and we put it out there and got some great applications, but we narrowed it down to a fantastic candidate, and that would be Erin LeBlanc. And, just a little background, Ms. LeBlanc has been working in the recreation field for many years, she dates back to her time with the Newton Recreation Department. She's also been volunteering for many years as the girls softball league board member, as well as a coach, and she's done fantastic work with the St. Thomas Church as a CCB teacher and a CYO coordinator, and just has done, we've watched her, and just the things that she has done has been amazing. She's also been on the Recreation Committee for many years. It took me a little bit, I had to rope her in because she was very busy volunteering for a lot of other things, but we were very grateful to have her. And more importantly, this past summer, we had our inclusive camp, and Erin stepped up into a role that we needed filled, and she was a godsend, she was amazing, we're so grateful she was able to jump in to the second-in-command for our camp because she really was outstanding, and we like to say it was like her test role. But we strongly recommend to the Board and to the Town Administrator that Erin LeBlanc be appointed to the Team Program Coordinator for the Recreation Department in Millis.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did have the opportunity to meet with Ms. LeBlanc, and I'm very impressed with her qualifications and her energy and positive spirit that she's bringing forward, and I think she will do an excellent job in this position. And with that, I am formally requesting that the Board ratify my appointment of Erin LeBlanc as the Team, Part-Time Team Program Coordinator for the Town of Millis.
That's great. I will open it to any discussion from the Board members. Ms. Underhill?
I have no real specific questions or anything, but I am familiar with Erin and how she, how well she works with the youth here, so to speak. She, I ran into her a lot during the summer programs with the Recreation Department, and she's always very upbeat and really an ideal candidate for this position.
Mr. Schultz? I have no questions, but welcome aboard after we ratify. It's a privilege on that one.
Okay, and I likewise have no questions, your credentials look superb, and everything I hear is you tend to rock on water, so that's just great. Okay, I'll take a nomination from the Board.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the Town Manager to, what word am I looking for? I always call the...
Ratify, ratify the appointment of...
Ratify the appointment of Erin LeBlanc for the Recreation Position.
Okay, it's a second, do I hear it? You're muted, Erin?
I know, yes, second.
It's a move and seconded to ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Erin LeBlanc for the Team Program Coordinator in the Recreation Department. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes? It's unanimous, welcome aboard, Ms. LeBlanc. Do you have anything you'd like to say? You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, we can, yeah.
I just want to say to all of you how thankful I am for the position, I just love working with the kids, and I have so many ideas that I promise to work very, very hard in a very fruitful way for all of our kids, both in middle school and high school, but I'm very, very thankful for the opportunity, and I'm excited to be onboard at the Rec Department, because it's a great department.
We're glad to have you, and I think Ron Jackson is likewise very happy. He'll have to explain sometime where the Ron Jackson comes from. So, anyway, Chris, looks like a great nomination. Mr. Gazinski?
Yes, thank you, thank you very, thank you very much, and we look forward to having you onboard.
Great, well, okay, on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the opening of the Town Meeting Warrant. So, does any, do I have some motion on that?
We'll make a motion that we open the Town Meeting Warrant.
Again?
Yes, and there, that's the motion.
It's a move and seconded to open the Town Meeting Warrant. I'll poll the Board, Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's unanimous. Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there's really a couple matters that I'll just bring up tonight briefly, but most of which do not need to be decided tonight, but I just wanted to let the Board know that as of this point, I am recommending that the Board consider the Fall Annual Town Meeting for November 8th. I have discussed this date with the Town Moderator and the Chair of the Finance Committee, and this would be the preferred date of the meeting, just to make the Board aware that, you know, in the Charter it does say, not the Charter, sorry, in the bylaws, it says that the Fall Annual Town Meeting shall be held on the first Monday in November, this would be the second. I have spoken with Town Council, and he feels fairly certain that the Board has that authority. Having said that, you don't have to make that decision this evening, I'd be asking the Board to make that final determination at your next meeting in two weeks at the closing of the warrant. And also, I would be asking the Health Director, John McVeigh, to come to your next meeting in two weeks to discuss, you know, exactly where and under what conditions the town meeting would take place. Right now, we're recommending the high school auditorium, but it's an ever-evolving situation, obviously with COVID, so we're just gonna keep an eye on that and be ready to make some recommendations on, you know, the details of that at your next meeting.
Great. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr. Schultz.
Since it's only a bylaw, not a charter change, to take, change the date, that just is a town meeting motion, correct? It doesn't have to go, that's pretty straightforward?
It's my, in my communication with the Town Council, yes, it is pretty straightforward. He feels strongly that under the state law, that any annual town meeting, the Select Board has the authority to set the date. The bylaws are simply a guideline for the Select Board in that, in that area.
And just reading the email that came out about the date change and the fact it conflicts with elections every other year, would it make sense to put something in the warrant that we've now opened to just change that permanently to the second date? I don't have an issue this year, but going forward, we might just be able to put it all to bed if one fell through.
It, I mean, something I would certainly maybe recommend, you know, could do it at the annual, at the spring annual, or if the Board wanted to, we could, we could add it to the fall, but it's something I'd recommend because the first Monday is problematic, I can't speak to the people who, I'm sure in their wisdom, put that in there, and at the time it made sense, but at this point, with the, with the state elections happening the first Tuesday, that's gonna set up a situation where most years, that's gonna be back-to-back, and that will be, that is, is very difficult for the Town Clerk's Office to manage both.
Okay. Yeah, this is something we have discussed. I think it's a good idea, and I would suggest we put it in as a bylaw change right now, if we can get it in. It shouldn't be that onerous, and there's good rationale behind it.
Very well, I can, if you'd like, I'll put together a draft article that'll be ready for your next meeting to consider that.
I've seen all of 12 articles at this moment, it looks like, if I saw 35 articles, I'd hesitate on it.
I think some of them may take a little explanation anyway. I'd like to go through the articles if we could, Mr. Gazinski, and give a chance for the Board to comment on each one if they choose to do so.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I would just, I would just start off the conversation by saying this is simply a first draft, you know, the, these are the ones that I'm fairly certain of, there may be other articles that come forward in the next two weeks, but, you know, these are the ones that, you know, we should be discussing and the Board should be aware of to make a final determination for their inclusion on the warrant. So, I'd be, if you'd like, I'd be happy to go through those.
One other comment, yes, Mr. Gazinski, go through these, if something comes up from any of the Board members that you think we ought to include something else on the warrant, please, this is the time, it should be open to your ideas at whatever level you choose, so please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Article 1 is the payment of prior-year unpaid bills. This is a fairly standard article, budgetary article, we usually start off most town meetings with, and again, I don't expect to have a lot of bills on this list, but we have this here, and I expect maybe, maybe two to three unpaid bills, and again, usually that's because of timing issues or other complications during the billing process. So, that's, that's all I have on that one at this time. Article 2 is for the, the transfers within the current, within, hold on a second. So, Article 2 is our FY '22 Operational Budget Adjustments, so that is to make any mid-year adjustments that are needed due to unanticipated circumstances that have occurred since the May 1st Town Meeting. And also, as part of that, as part of the budget planning process in the, in the spring, we had anticipated that there'd be certain transfers from the Marijuana Impact Fees to fund the second half of fiscal year '22 for certain, certain programmatic services for the town. So, again, that, that chart will be put together over the next two weeks, and you'll have that as part of your, your packet at your next meeting. Article 3 is the Capitol Article. The Capitol Planning Committee has been hard at work going through the Capitol Project requests, they will be meeting several times over the next month, and looking at the different requests, and they're in the process of getting updates from all the departments that have requests before them to make sure that the information is up to date and accurate. And, again, I would, I would expect by your next meeting, I'll at least be able to give you an update on the, on the projects that the Capitol Committee is, is looking at, and that we'll be able to put before the town meeting at the Fall Town Meeting. Article 4, for the PFAS Water Treatment Plant, that is a dead authorization for that project. I don't, I'm sure the Board is, is very familiar with that, we're in the process of working with Bond Counsel to get the proper language for that article, and getting the final dollar amounts from our consultants in planning for that project.
Mr. Chairman, a quick cut. Go ahead. Is that just for the first of the treatment plants that might be needed, the one we know we need at this moment?
That's correct, that's for Wells 1 and 2.
Thank you.
Just so you're aware, for the rest of the Board members, I've had several calls with Representative Alkon Klaas's office, Mr. Gazinski has been involved in a couple of those with me. We're trying to make absolutely certain that when funds are made available through the, I can never remember the acronyms they use, but, when that funding comes available, we will be able to apply as much as possible. I am pushing doggedly for up to $15 million. I'm not saying we're gonna have to spend it all, but I, when they keep coming back and saying, well, $2 million, $3 million, as Mr. Gazinski knows, I keep telling them, no, no, I want the full 15 if we need it. They've gotten that message loud and clear, probably more than they ever want to hear, but I'm not letting up on that, just so you're aware. I think it's absolutely critical, and they keep saying that, well, technically, yes, the funds, when they're available, if we can allocate them, we will, so I keep telling them, please make sure you do allocate them accordingly.
Great, thank you. The next article on the draft list is Article 5, the Senior Work Program Abatement Adjustment. This is related to our Senior Tax Work Off Program. The state has expanded the, the hours and the amount that senior tax work-off individuals can, can generate within the town, and we need to put some language in there that matches the state language so we can also expand that amount to maximize the available credit that the senior tax work-off folks can get by working in the program. So, again, a little specific language for your meeting, for your next meeting.
Mr. Gazinski, do we have any idea how much this is likely to cost the town?
We'll certainly have that for your next meeting, we can certainly put out like a worst-case scenario as far as financial impact based on the number of individuals we have and the difference. It's not an extremely large amount, you know, from the town's perspective, but it certainly, I'm sure, makes a difference to those individuals that are working in the program.
Absolutely, I just want to make sure that we are funded appropriately.
Very good. The next item is, again, one the Boards are familiar with, the Sewer Bylaw Amendment in regards to changes needed for the Sewer Bylaw as far as the requirements of hooking up into the system, that, as the Board instructed, has been forwarded to the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee for their review, and I will bring back any updates for the Board when they're available.
Have we had any follow-up from the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee as of yet?
I haven't received anything formal as of yet.
Okay. I would submit that this is something that we, the Board, as a whole, need to be pushing on. We need to get clarification, and if we're not getting it from Enterprise Fund, then I think it's something we have to begin to draft up and make, make the information available in a form that the residents could understand.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would like, I think we should start working on a draft of it and have input from the Enterprise Committee. I value it, but I think it's important to get their feedback, but I think it's more important to try to get this thing rolling quickly, and whether a committee who are not the, since we're, since we're the Water and Sewer Authority, I think it should be drafted by us, but I would value their input on it, definitely. I don't know if they should be the ones coming up with a blank piece of paper and turning it into a policy. So, I do think that's something we need to work on or work with them or push it a little bit more, because I'm afraid that anything that's going to be at the level of complexity that this probably will be is going to take longer than we've allowed ourselves to explain it thoroughly if we don't get it soon.
I tend to agree with you, and that then leads into another question, should we set up as quickly as possible a working session with the Board to put together a document and information, a presentation, whatever, to begin putting this whole process?
Yeah, please.
I would agree with that.
I recall there was an early draft of this last year, or a year before, that we, that we started with, instead of starting with a blank piece of paper, can we just, can we send that out so we can all start editing on that, maybe send edits back to Mike, and then when we get to our working group, we've at least got some ideas on paper that we can move quickly with? I think it needs to be short, concise, clear, and achieve our goal, I'm afraid if it turns into anything too complicated to understand, we're gonna have a tough time getting a affirmative vote on it, this important item.
I think we all concur on that.
Yeah.
Okay, I will dig up what I can, what I'm aware of, and Mr. Gazinski, perhaps?
Send out the latest drafts I have to the Board, we'll get those out tomorrow.
Right.
Chairman, Chair Jermaine?
Yeah.
I am the liaison for that committee, and I have not been notified of any intentions for meetings, so I'm not, unless I was accidentally left off, I'm actually not sure if anything has happened since we discussed what that goal would be.
I think what we're basically saying, and I happen to agree, as we all have in the past, is what Mr. Schultz is saying, is we have to take the initiative, we have to begin the drafting, we have to lay out the specifics as to how it should be done, and we'll do whatever we have to to drive it, hopefully we can use them in their advisory role once we get some of this structure together, but ultimately, it is our responsibility. Okay, we'll get that out within the next couple of days if that's a reasonable thing, Mr. Gazinski. I have some documents here that I'll make sure we get out, then we'll begin to codify how we want the process to work.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. The next item on your list, Article 7, this is a request from the Board of Health, actually, in regards to, a request to have a regulation, a bylaw regulation put in place, having to do with the installation of foundations a certain height above groundwater, is certainly something that they've been working on for some time, and I would expect to be able to insert language in that later this week, so the Board can take a closer look at that, but it's, this is a request from the Board of Health. Article 8 is in regards to a request of the state, the town's legislative delegation, having to do with proposed changes to the Charter, which the Board has spoken about at recent meetings, and I think the Board had approved the, at least the draft language to be placed in the article, and we'll have the article drawn up for the next, for your next meeting.
How is that progressing? I know we agreed on this some time ago.
Yes, we should have, we should have an article put in place, hoping to have that out to the Board by the end of this week.
Excellent. Would you make sure that the Board members all get a copy of that so that we can have it on the agenda and comment on it at our next meeting?
Yep, absolutely. Article 9 is a transfer for our Snow and Ice Deficit. The Finance Director has provided me with a number of $78,810 for the deficit from last year, and that's how we've addressed that over the past several years, any deficit. Article 10 is a transfer into the Unemployment Account, we'll have some updated numbers on that for your next meeting, but this is certainly the way that we've done it, is periodically put money into that account, something that would probably be coming up perhaps over the winter to discuss for the Spring Annual Town Meeting, is to consider setting up an unemployment revolving fund so that we can, you know, keep that account, it's a better way to manage those funds, so something that would, yeah, would probably come before you over the winter, but at this time, we do need to transfer some funds into that account, and we'll have a breakdown of that, again, for you prior to your next meeting.
Perhaps, if you could, just for the audience, a brief explanation of the distinction between that and OPEB, I know OPEB gets confusing for people, so...
Right, so, OPEB is the other...
Post-Employment Benefits.
Post-Employment Benefits, and that essentially is for health insurance for retirees, 95% of that is what that is, and about seven or eight years ago, the GASB rule went into effect that towns had to account for the liability for the health insurance costs for its employees, and as part of that, they've strongly encouraged towns to put aside funds into that account to cover that liability moving forward. The Unemployment Account is, is to cover unemployment costs related to employees that are separated, who work for the town at the schools that are separated from employment, unlike private businesses, the town does not have unemployment insurance, we pay, we pay directly for the unemployment funds, so that is, that is a required cost that the town has to account for.
Thank you.
Next item, Article 11, is a transfer of $7,300 for an OPEB Actuarial Study, which is something we're required to do, I believe, every other year, I'm sure Karen will correct me on that if I'm wrong, but I think, I think that's every other year, to make sure that those accounts are, are in proper condition, so, and also as well to cost out the liability every two years to the town.
That's what struck me as a ridiculous cost, I mean, if they're gonna tell me I owe $20 million, $16 million, I don't, you know, I'd rather put $7,300 towards the thing.
I, I kind of agree, but...
Yeah, I understand accounting rules, so, it just always struck me as, you know, $7,300 to tell you that you're, I don't know if the number even might be, $20, $20 dollars out.
Another liability, yes.
I just accept that you, yeah, that you increase it by 10%, call the day and put $7,300 towards OPEB, but, anyway.
So, the last item is going to establish a new Workers' Compensation Claims Reserve Fund. Again, as I spoke about earlier, there are mechanisms where towns can manage budgets through these types of reserve funds, you know, at this Fall Town Meeting, and this is something that the Finance Director and I have discussed, we're not necessarily asking for any funds at this Fall's Town Meeting for this, but to set up the account so that if we do have... so that if we do have costs related to workers' compensation that are not covered, fully covered by our insurance, that this will be picked up by this account, and departments won't have to go back to the Finance Committee and ask for transfers for additional wages or other costs related to unexpected situations where employees have to be out of work for a period of time. So, that is all the articles I have for you this evening. I have had some discussions with the school officials. And I would, I would say that we will have a few articles from them coming forward. I believe that the school committee is meeting in the next day or two. So I would expect some articles from there. And again, as articles come in at this point, I will simply send out that information to you on a daily basis as I receive that, so that you have all the information you need prior to your next meeting in two weeks.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, then I suggest that I'll take a motion to, I guess, well, we've opened the town meeting warrant, did we open that as of tonight?
Yes.
Yes, and you probably just want to announce that the warrant will close in two weeks. So in two weeks, at your next meeting, on, next regular meeting on the 27th, the board will vote to close the warrant. And that's exactly what I will announce, that we will be keeping the meeting, the warrant open for the next two weeks. It will close on the 27th. I encourage you, if you have any issues that you want to bring forward for the town warrant, please do so. And to the board members, again, I say to you, if you have anything, this is your opportunity to do so. Fair enough? Okay. We've discussed the articles, I guess we'll now go into the open session agenda. The next item on there is town paving update from Mr. McKay, by Director of the DPW. Who is Mr. McKay? Oh, yes, I see, UCM four.
Yes.
I don't know if he's, oh, he is there, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll get the update first. This has been reviewed with the town accountant and the town administrator in the last week or so. So the Chapter 90 funding projects have been completed, and we have paved Farm Street from Almerod to Brandywine Terrace, I believe it's Brandywine. Main Street, we did two sections of Main Street in front of the, from Plain Street to Park Road, and from Park Road almost to Exchange Street. Ridge Street was done from Urban Road to Union Street. And Exchange Street was done from Main Street to Exchange Street intersection. I'm very happy to report that the, all came in on budget. We did not exceed any of the expenses with that. And all that will be paid under the Chapter 90. And we're not ready to close the lot yet, we're still waiting for the line painting and a couple of police details. What we've already submitted, we've already paid Miozy, which is a big chunk of it for the paving and all the mantel covers repairs and stuff like that. He's been paid, and we're right on target with the estimate that was approved by the board. I did provide a spreadsheet of what the class were, and that was, the last original contract that you approved was for $487,199.60. Out of that, $85,503 is still, needs to be the base cost of the DPW parking lot, which will be paid out of the project itself. So those funds are not going to be taken out of Chapter 90 funding. It was, we're happy we did that type of, putting it out to bid because we feel we got a better price. We paid $75 a ton for the asphalt, and that's pretty significant and pretty good. That work will be done, they're ready to turn the parking lot over to us, the contractor, and within the next week or two, and that work will get done before the, you know, fall in winter months, that we won't be able to pave there. We'd like to leave, we will let it settle, and this is, you know, the permanent building committee approved this, let everything settle because there's been so many trenches dug in that area. And that way, come next spring, we'd put the top coat on the parking lot. And that's just the parking lot, the roads around it at this time are not scheduled to be paved. And not, you know, until we figure out what the amount of the top coat, you know, this is all within the restriction of the DPW project area. Happy to report that Orchard Street was completed, and that was not, did not cost the town any money for paving of that, or the reconstruction of it. And that job was completed. At the next meeting, we're going to ask for, you know, the relinquish of the bond. For Toll Brothers, they've completed the outside work for the town. They've finished the sewer lift station, they've finished all the relief valves. We've gone through, as we all know, many, many rainstorms since it's been paved, and we've had no complaints of water running off in any other way on Orchard Street, or in any, actually, any of these projects. So, very pleased with the paving that was done so far. Bridge Street, we're hoping to get that done, you know, this fall. And that, again, that is a developer who paid for that. That's under the new Dover Road Assisted Living Project, the company that purchased that from the other contractor. And they plan to, hopefully, that work of finishing tying in sewer households and water mains and the building itself, and paving the top coat on Bridge Street, you know, this fall. If not, it'll be done in the spring, and if for any reason that's not done, we do have enough funds, you know, from the contractor holding for that paving to get done. So that leads us to Phase Two. I think if you remember a couple of months, I would say about halfway between the paving, and I did come and I asked for a, for you to approve paving contract with the funds for the annual town meeting. When we got that bid that finally came in, we felt that we could do a little better if we actually put it out to bid. We were using a Mass-Miniscule bid that we had, and we did put it out to bid. And I think it was the exact same contractor, you know, won the bid, but we did get a little better price because he had, you know, competitiveness. So the project scope of work that we'd like to do is Spring Street. And that's the, and would like to do Spring Street from Main Street to Plain Street. And that project would commence late, late September, early October. And still, we have plenty of time to get that done. So we would do, we would mill it, just like we did Ridge Street, you know, an inch and a half, and we would top coat it, you know, with an inch and a half replacement. And that would be, if approved, if you approved this, I'd ask the town administration to sign a contract with Larissa Corporation in the amount of, excuse me. I'll change my glasses. And again, that all comes from the Article 17 from the FY '22 Spring Annual Town Meeting. And the amount that was appropriated in that article was $143,805.23. What I'd like to do, would need a vote, with the remaining funds with that, I think we all know that Walnut Street is in real bad shape. And we'd like to use most of those funds to skim coat over most of the craters that are up there. We're not exactly, we're not ready to put a bid out for that because that's still, we have to put the booster station, the Walnut Street booster station. As you know, that you approved the sale of that land and the gift. So we are looking for that, maybe, you know, next year or the year after that. So we'd like to, like I said, skim coat the top of that with the remaining of those funds. And also would use our milling machine and take care of a good chunk of, you know, the bad, bad craters along Exchange Street near the Oak Grove, that whole area, that stretch that was never, that was not paved when Toll Brothers only did the sections that they brought the sewer main down. So we will use all those funds, and it's, to get this amount and to be able to do something this late in the season, you know, we're going to get a lot of, you know, questions, why did it wait so long? With the paving that we did with Chapter 90, we had to hold these monies in reserve because if it went over, there'd be an article on the fall town meeting to appropriate funds for this. You know, we did, we were very aggressive in using a lot of the Chapter 90 funding that we had, we have. And we did spend $418,000 in the paving work that was completed, you know, this summer. So this work, we still have time to get it done. And Spring Street, it's on the list, that, you know, going down the list of, you know, of the pull roads in the list. As we know, there's more pull roads than pretty much anything else. But we feel that this was the best use of these funds for right now, and I think that would fit, you know, complete that area. There's a lot of talk about sidewalks on Spring Street, you know, from the intersection of Main Street to, you know, the entrance of the Clyde Brown Ripoff. We're not going to be able to do that, you know, but you can still pave the road and put sidewalks in. All the telephone poles would have to be moved, so it's, it's not, it's not in the cards right now to have sidewalks, you know, it's bull in that area for that. And then one last thing, I know there's a lot of discussion about the Orchard Street Bridge now that the roads have all been paved. We did get a quote to finish, you know, putting, you know, a new facade on where the trucks hit it, and I'm sure you all drive by it, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. So we did get a local masonry person in Millis that's going to take care of that at a nominal price. And we'll take that out of the general budget, DPW budget, to fix that. And I think that's pretty much it. I think, one last question, I think a lot of people are asking about the trench, I'm sorry, from Ridge Street going down to the Orchard Street Bridge with a gas trench. You know, that's up to them to come back and do that, and we are on them quite a bit. And we'll see if they're going to get that done this fall, but they will at least, you know, come mill and grind out that trench and fill that in. But that's up to the gas company to take care of that. So it's a brief explanation, I will definitely come back when all of these are all ready with final dollar amounts, you know, when all the projects are done. You know, I would say maybe in November, but I don't know if you have any questions? How we came to pick Ridge Street, I mean, not Richard, Spring Street? Any questions you have?
Well, I'm going to just start off by saying, first of all, I'm very pleased with what I've seen. I drive Ridge Street regularly, and it's quite different. It's much safer, is what I will say. I do have one quick question. When they put down this paving, obviously, they have to put down a tat coat.
Correct.
They don't put a tat coat down properly, portions begin to lift after a few years because moisture gets under it, so on. Do we have any way of going back and saying, hey, you didn't put down an adequate tat coat?
So it's usually, paving's usually good for one year. And if we noticed, there is, our contractors, that that has happened in Millis, and we just, we never hire them, we won't hire them ever again. Because it did happen on, you know, many sections of Village Street. That's why Village, big chunks of Village Street were paved about eight, nine years ago. And we're up to redoing them now because of that exact reason.
Okay. That's it for me, and we will have the other board members. Oh, okay.
Jim, do they need to vote to approve the?
Oops.
They have to vote to approve this new contract?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we approve the Larissa Corporation bid for Spring Street, $125,435.20.
Second.
I'm seconded to agree to the paving and the contract approval for the paving of Spring Street from Main Street to Plain Street, 3,550 feet in the amount of $125,435.20. I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's approved unanimously. I do want to comment to you, Mr., sorry, Jim.
Sorry, Jim, you're in big confusion, I see.
But thank you very much for the effort you've put in and the resourceful way in which you've managed the monies for this so that we are actually getting extra out of it this year. The town appreciates that, I for one do, but I think it's important that the town acknowledge that, so.
And like I said earlier, the biggest thing is the appreciation to the town voters for appropriating these funds. They can see how much it's going to help each year. If, if we could do it this year, it'd be great, but we'll see.
We'll see what happens.
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto Urban Land Institute's Technical Assistance Panel Study, a request for the board's support.
Mr. Chairman, actually, unfortunately, Mr. Weiss had an issue come up and he couldn't be here this evening, so he's asked that that item be pushed off to your next meeting on the 27th.
That's fine with us. Anybody, any of the board members have an objection to that? Okay. So, let's schedule that for the next meeting. Review of the, approval of the pilot, pay in lieu of taxes, agreement with the Clyde Brown rooftop solar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Weiss asked me to give the overview to the board and present this and ask for the board's approval this evening. As we had mentioned before you this evening, is the final pilot agreement for the Clyde Brown Solar Array between the town and Sollec Energy Development LLC, which is the company that will be installing and that will own the solar array on the Clyde Brown Elementary School. For those watching who may not know, a pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. And essentially, it's just a different way of them paying their taxes. These agreements have to be approved by the Department of Revenue, and they do pay the full amount of taxes, it's just paid in a different sequential way. The approval for the board to execute such an agreement was done at the recent spring town meeting. The public, the Millis Schools, the school committee will be making its final review of their power purchase agreement with solar energy. And that should be approved with the school committee later this month. And the installation and the construction should begin in the early fall and be finished in time to be producing power at the beginning of 2022. This agreement has been approved by town council, and this is the last step in a very long process. Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Weiss. This turned into a much longer and more complicated process than we had envisioned. But he worked through with all the parties and got us to the finish line. And I know that the Finance Director and our assessor are on the line as well in case there are any questions for them. But as far as we're all concerned, the pilot is ready to be approved, and we're asking the board for the board's approval this evening.
I would like to ask one question, and that is, this is going to be put on the roof of the school, correct? The brand-new school.
That's correct.
Do they take responsibility with if there are any leaks or damage to the roof?
Absolutely. They take over full ownership of the warranty on the roof for the entire time that the panels are on the roof.
Okay. I will open it to the board for any further discussion.
And Mr. Chairman, this was, adding solar panels was always a consideration in the project. It just made no sense to do it during the project because you have to bid them five or six years before you're ready to install them. And in that time, technology obviously changes, as do prices. So the work was done, the roof was designed, and everything else was put in place to accommodate these. It was just not part of the original project for the very reason that, you know, they stated that technology's going to change and prices will drop. they stated that technology is going to change and prices will drop over time. So I think it's great. I think it's time to ratify and approve this and move on.
Ms. Underhill?
I have no further comments, but I'm happy to make a motion.
Very good.
I move that we approve the pilot agreement for Clyde Brown rooftop solar.
Second.
I move seconded to approve the pilot agreement for the Clyde Brown's solar array to be installed by town and for the town by Select Energy Development LLC. Are there any further comments, questions? Then I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. We approve unanimously. Thank you. ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund update. Mr. Gazinski and Ms. Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin. I just wanted to, I thought it was important that board just had an update on where things stood in regards to these federal programs. I will start with the ARPA funds. I think the board has discussed, we've discussed the ARPA funds and those amounts coming in two different allocations. One would be a direct allocation to the town and the other would be through the county. The total of those, of those funds come into just under $2.5 million. And, you know, again, there are prescribed ways that those funds can be used. I know one of the avenues we looked at is to assist with the water treatment plant for PFAS. And so, and there are other areas that can be looked at. And these funds can be utilized up until 2024. So there is some time. But in order to utilize the funds, the town meeting would have to approve, whether that be a bond for the water treatment plant or other commitments. And then we could ask for those funds to be utilized for those items. So, Mr. Chair, if we may, I'll turn it over to Karen to see if she has any items to share in regards to this or any updates on the original CARES Act funds.
Thank you. The only thing that I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of is that in order for us to receive the funding from the county, they're setting up, they outsourced it to Clifton Larson Allen. We're all familiar with that consulting firm and the lead consultant on that, as well as Powers and Sullivan is the secondary firm to be able to send, you know, send the money out. In order for us to apply for it from the county for that $1.6 million they have, we have to have an approved plan that's been certified by town meeting vote that that's the project that we'll be working on, that we need the funding for. So that's why it's important for us, and Mr. Gazinski has put it in the town warrant for the Fall Meeting, to be able to, if one of the, you know, areas of the project would be the infrastructure for water or sewer. So we obviously have the big project for the water treatment plant. And it seems that that would be the most logical use of funds at this point. So it is important for us to be able to first decide, is that the plan that the select board wants to move forward with? And then get a town meeting vote to be certified. Once that happens, we can take that certified vote and then apply for that $1.6 million of the ARPA funding.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
Karen Jermaine?
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
Yes, I have a couple, well, I guess I have one question. While it does sound like it makes sense to, that this would go towards the PFAS remediation treatment plant, what other, have you, have you guys identified other options and other priorities that we currently have within town that would qualify for that money? Just so that we're aware of what else was possible?
This money, right now, there are only a few categories it can be used in. One of them, as I said, is the infrastructure for water or sewer, infrastructure for broadband, which I don't believe the town would be interested in funding. Revenue replacement, we were not impacted, so we don't have a revenue replacement. Premium pay for first responders, similar to a bonus plan, it could be used for that. The economic impact, again, the town was not really negatively impacted by the coronavirus. And support public health, well, we already have CARES money that's supporting the public health. So unless Mr. Gazinski has a different or is aware of other projects, this is the only one that I'm aware of at this point in time. It's of a critical nature that we want to move forward with.
If I could add, Mr. Chairman, certainly we can take a look to see if there are any other needs that the town has that could fit in these categories. But as the finance director mentioned, this one is certainly squarely within the, within the bounds of that. The others, we'd have to analyze to see if they would be allowable. And it's certainly something that we can look at and have some discussions with the folks at the county as well as the state. But again, the largest bill that's facing the town is the, is the treatment plant. And that would, that would be something that would not be questioned certainly by the federal or state agencies. So not to say there couldn't be other things that we could look at and see if that would qualify.
Chairman Jermaine?
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
If I could just follow up with that. I don't think personally, my opinion wouldn't be that you should do any extra work at this point to try to find other areas. I completely agree with the assessment of the PFAS, you know, water treatment station. It's going to be a huge hit to the town. And I think anything that we can do or any funds we can secure to alleviate that is quite worthy. So I was just curious, just wanting to know if there were other things that we should be considering when we do this.
Very good. Yes, the categories were narrower than I had hoped originally. Certainly, we can make full use of the funds, but there's, there are some certain limitations to how we can utilize those.
Mr. Schultz, do you?
I don't, I, my machine cut out for just a moment. So what was the total amount of it?
Two, oh yeah, 2.483916.
Right, so the direct allocation to the town is $869,796. And the amount that would be coming through the county, and the county has indicated that there would be a 3% administrative fee coming off of the portion coming through the county. But the full amount would be $1,614,120 through the county.
Okay. So, you know, it helps defer a portion of at least one plant, which would be of the $5 million. And we'll continue to try to push for more. Any other thoughts?
If it's that highly restricted and this fits into it perfectly, then it's a logical choice.
I think based on what I'm understanding and what Ms. Johnston gave us as information, I think it's correct. Okay. There's no further action we need to take on this at this time. This is information, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The next item of business is approval for the purchase of the Council on Aging Van. And I apologize, I think there was an update to that this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I can go through that briefly if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
So the Council on Aging, as the board is aware, was awarded a $60,000 earmark for FY '22 for the purchase of a vehicle to provide transportation for Millis seniors and disabled residents through Representative Blinsky and our other, and duly, and Senator Roush. We do have, they have a 2021 Ford T350 with handicap accessibility. We have that on hold for $64,885. The remaining $4,885 would be funded from generous donations from the community to the Friends Group for a vehicle. And the Council on Aging is requesting that we select board approve the purchase so that they can move forward. These vehicles have been flying off the lots and they have already lost one or two vehicles that they've tried to hold to get approval. But they've literally been coming on available and gone within a couple of days. So also, as was part of the amendment, the council was notified that the, they would offer up to a $13,000 credit for the trade-in of the 2011 vehicle. However, they are requesting that instead that the town sell the 2011 van outright. And that, they were hoping that in the future, I believe that the town meeting could provide some other equipment or other items for the, for the Council on Aging with those funds. And they would like to use the full $60,000 of the earmark for the purchase. So did everyone get a copy of this? I'm not sure if everyone received the letter from Patty.
Yeah, I sent it this morning.
So she originally asked to see if the funds could go back to the Friends. I don't believe that it's possible to do that. But certainly, I think her recommendation that the Friends would cover the difference and that the town could sell the vehicle and use those proceeds for some future Council on Aging related use is the best way to go. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board have or any of the comments that the board has in regards to this proposed purchase.
I don't have any specific questions. So basically, what I understand when I read through this letter is that if we move forward with the original purchase as put forward for $64,885, we have to come up with this $4,885 and the earmark for $60,000 would cover the rest. Whereas the alternative meant that we wouldn't use the full earmark, but more important, we'd still have to come up with $8,000. So you're basically asking that we move forward with this original purchase of $64,885 and that the town would come up with $4,885 or it would be funded from the community for our friends. Now, I say it that way because I don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we approve allowing that the funds will come from the Friends and something happens and we have therefore not approved the amount in the event it is needed. Is that a rational way to proceed?
I believe it is. I think the, essentially, at this point, we would need the board's authorization to move ahead with the contract for the purchase. And then we could certainly look at the different ways to maximize the sale of the van to bring those funds back to the community. I think the goal here is to utilize the full $60,000 earmark. That's, that's the key issue. Honestly, the state doesn't like it when we don't use the full amount because it is a major headache if we're giving back $1,000 or $3,000. It creates a major headache for them. And certainly, I think it's in the town's interest to get the full credit for that vehicle back to the town, of the, of the used vehicle.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just don't want to find us in a situation where we don't have the monies available. So it seems to me we have to make the approval for the entire $64,885.
That is correct. I'd recommend the board authorize up to that amount.
That's right.
Have the Friends already transferred or donated? I don't disagree with you, I'm just like, the Friends have already transferred their, their money and once we authorize it, I just want to make sure that, that commitment's still there.
It's my understanding that the commitment, the commitment is, is still there.
I assume it would be, but I didn't find it.
If the board were to approve the contract with the funding from the town up to that $64,000, that would cover any issues that come up over the next week or two to make sure we can purchase that vehicle. The concern is if we lose this vehicle, it may be another month, two months, three months before we can secure another vehicle. This is how fast they're going off the lots.
I understand. A motion. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Quick question. So should we, should we do this for that exact amount or should we say 65?
The board can authorize up to 65 if you wanted to. And certainly, and authorize me to sign, sign the contract. The only reason it would be more than that is if there was some other add-on that the, of a small amount, but I don't foresee that happening. But the $65,000 would both uncover it.
And I was just going to ask the question, and the disposal of the van, that was, we do have some estimates on that, I thought it's on here?
Yes, approximately $50,000. Open to value, I mean, the used vehicles are, have a high value right now.
Yeah, I'm fine with the disposal of it and those funds just being put towards the general fund. And if we do need, or, I just, not giving it back to the Friends because that's made improper from a municipality to transfer back to a private organization. But I do think it can be put into the general fund and if needed, it's available. So, yeah. I don't have anything open that would allow me to make a motion.
Okay, I've got it.
Thank you.
All right.
You seem to have PDFs open, I can't find the one that's got the number on it.
Okay. I move that we approve, hold on. I have it open, it's just not helpful. I move that we approve the purchase for the vehicle for the Council on Aging, Ford T350, 2021, not to exceed $65,000.
Second. I seconded to recommend the purchase of the 2021 Handicap COAVV in the amount of a Ford T350 in an amount not to exceed $65,000.
And for the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf.
And authorize the town administrator to sign the appropriate papers for that purchase. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, approved unanimously. So the next item I show here, review and approval of classification and compensation study contract. This goes back to negotiations earlier.
It does.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, me, just to, I just, you know, just to remind, this goes back to discussions we had with the SEIU during our last negotiations with them. As part of those negotiations, we discussed that the board would consider moving forward with such a project to help guide discussions going forward. The town meeting, at a recent town meeting, the board had put that forward and was approved $15,000 for funding of a classification and compensation study for certain employees within the town in certain positions. And we went ahead with the process to do that. Karen took the lead on that. So if you know why, I'd like to turn it over to her and talk a little bit about the process we went through and the company that we're recommending to bring on board.
Sure. So we, this was approved at the 2020 So we, uh, this was approved at the, uh, twenty twenty, uh, November twenty twenty annual town meeting. Due to COVID, unfortunately, we were not able to actually get the request for proposals out until the summer, um, but we did advertise for this. We only received one submission, which was from Gov HR. They are well-known, um, and well-recommended. Um, so we, we did get that proposal recently. Uh, Mike and I went through it. Um, it was a little higher than we originally anticipated. We discussed with them, we moved a few things around and I think we're in a really good place, um, where it's directly at fifteen thousand at this point. Uh, we're looking for this to be wrapped up in January. This will all be done through Zoom or the majority of it will be done through Zoom. They'll be interviewing different employees and looking at the whole, um, structure that we have, um, uh, for job classifications. Uh, but as I said, we should hopefully have this wrapped up in January and get some really good information. I think it's important that this goes out, this is done periodically, um, for any organization, especially in municipalities, things change and it's a good time to, uh, look at different positions.
I, I do remember the negotiations and the agreement with the SEIU and this, as I recall, comes in within the limits that we expected it to do at the time. Are there any other comments from the board members? Then I'll take a motion to approve the contract.
Okay. I move that we approve the, the contract with Gov HR USA and authorize the town administrator to execute the contract for the work on the town's behalf.
Up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, sorry, up to fifty thousand dollars.
Second. To move and seconded to, uh, recommend that the approval of the contract with Gov HR for the, uh, classification and compensation study in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars and to, uh, allow the town administrator approval to sign the contract or whatever other documents are necessary to proceed in that direction. I'll call the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. It's approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Little bit of work you have to do there. Okay. Uh, next item is review and approval of a letter of endorsement for a Norfolk County registrar. Um, I just received, excuse me, in the mail from, uh, William P. O'Donnell, a letter that I think dovetails directly with what was sent to us. Hopefully you all got, I was just gonna say, and I believe Mr. Kozinski and Karen, you had sent us this in the files anyway. So it's all basically the same thing. Um, I have to, I'm gonna make a couple of comments. The first is intuitively, because a few of us have been in this industry, it makes some sense to have a CIO. But the one thing I don't know is what's driving the concern and I tried to read some of the mouse print of some of the attached articles. I have to be honest, without a magnifying glass, it was almost impossible to read some of that, but, uh, there are arguments against it to a certain degree. I really don't understand it, to be very frank. And from my perspective, and this is just mine based on what I see and what I've been reading and what Mr. O'Donnell has, uh, has forwarded to us, I don't understand why they would move ahead with a CIO, but that's my initial impression. So I'm gonna open it to the board for further discussion.
Don't all jump in at once, please. I might, might say, cause I'm not sure why they would eliminate the CIO position they'd had, you know, and that's what, when I was looking it over and, and having been one of those people in that position at the last job and realizing I'm a position, I am in that position in this job, even though it's not an official title anymore, um, with the threats out there in the world today, not having somebody responding to them is just terrifying. I've told my IT staff, my one goal is not to be on the front page of the Globe for data breach. And I, I used to joke and say that, now I'm kind of serious about it because it is so prevalent.
Rans aware, it's all an issue.
Yeah. So it seems to me that it, it, it needs a position, it should be done and I, I, I do support putting a position in place.
Um, assuming we concur on this, which it appears we do, um, I would propose that we draft a letter.
Yeah.
And I would like inputs from each of you, but if you're willing, we'll designate Mr. Kozinski as the formal drafter of the letter. I'll be glad to assist him and then we'll have one final review that goes out to you and comes to him, which I believe is legitimate. And we'll then, at our, do we have to wait to our next meeting, Mr. Kozinski?
Uh, you do not. Um, if you want to ask the board members to send in any comments they have, if, if the board agrees to, um, authorize you and I to, um, compose the final le- letter, um, we can do that and then, um, we can ask the members to come in to sign it and send it out. We can have that all done within the next, you know, within the next week anyway.
Yeah. I think that makes sense, assuming the board agrees.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Me too.
I'll take a motion on that.
Um, I move that we authorize the town administrator and Chairman Jermaine to work together to form a letter in support of the Norfolk County Registrar for, um, a CIO position.
To move and seconded to, uh, permit the town administrator and the chair of the select board to draft a letter, uh, to be signed by the select board, uh, in support of a CIO position for the Register of Deeds Norfolk County. I'll call the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Uh, motion approved. Okay, so Mike, you and I can get together on that and we'll get something drafted out to them for, but please give us your comments if you have any. I think that this makes a lot of sense. The next item is one that I'm gonna bring to your attention because I felt it was important to do so. Um, as you know, we moved the town to Microsoft de jour for a, a variety of reasons that we've gone over over the last couple of years. Um, we have a variety of systems. I prefer not to go into detail on what they are for a variety of reasons, but-
See, this CIO discretion we just finished.
Uh, on the other hand, there are some new things that have come out de jour and some options that might be able to save us money and change the way in which we're doing certain things. And unfortunately, they're a little complicated because of the trade-offs, there are cost differentials, technical issues, I could go through a litany of issues here. Understanding them and understanding the differences is fairly complex. I will say I have some understanding of it because I've been involved with migrating a couple of clients in the last month and a half to two months, well, probably three or four months actually, taking advantage of some of these new features and capabilities. And as a result of that, I've asked town council if we could bring in the fellow I've been working with, who is very technically competent, to explain some of those issues to us, specifically to our IT director and any of the others who want to attend such a meeting, to go over what they are, explain them and have a back and forth consulting session for a period of about two hours. Uh, because I've had a business relationship with this individual, I want to make it absolutely clear that I have had and do have a business relationship, but this has nothing to do directly with that relationship. He's willing to work with us in that regard. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. If any of the board members have a problem with that, I want it upfront and we will take note of that and decide how we're gonna proceed.
Pete, I have no issues with it. I'd like to attend the meeting, uh, from, it's an area I do know a little bit about, so.
You are welcome to and we'll make sure that anyone who wants to attend has an opportunity to know when the meeting is going to occur. Uh, he's, he's really good at this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, me, and I know how to deal with the superficial issues, but this guy really gets down into nuts and bolts. Um, Ms. Underhill, do you have any concerns?
Hmm, not concerns, just, um, a question. Um, so does, does Microsoft not offer support for the product?
Yes, usually, but, um, every time I've installed it, I get a nice product and have to hire somebody who speaks, uh, most product and user.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, we use them, we, we get great prices as a nonprofit from Microsoft, so we have all of their stuff, but I've never been able to successfully implement without bringing, uh, uh, somebody in from the outside world.
Yeah, okay.
That's essentially what's happening here.
Yeah.
We have direct access to Microsoft also, but we're talking things above and beyond.
Yeah.
Microsoft speak with me, so.
I work for a software company, I get it.
Okay. Then we'll tell Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Kozinski, we'll tell Mr. Gilbert that it's okay and you and I can coordinate a time and so on for this to, uh, actually-
It's an actual select board meeting because we have a quorum. It'll be one of the most highly technical and highly boring meetings, you know, and I'll be fascinated.
It is interesting, I will say.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we, I don't think we need to take any vote on this. I just wanted to get a consensus or do you feel, otherwise, Mr. Kozinski?
I don't believe you need a vote. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you were just asking to see if there are any concerns or objections and there appear to be none.
Right, and just so you're all aware again, I have run this by town council and Mr. Kozinski and I have discussed it and they're all been gone over with a fine tooth comb, so thank you very much. Okay, next item, discuss the notice of intent to install Keno mon- monitor in the alpaca store. And you're gonna look at me and say, why are we concerned with that? Uh, you're looking at the guy who has the concern, so I'm gonna raise it and I know I'm gonna drive all of you crazy on this and then you'll tell me, get out of here, but I'm gonna raise it anyway and tell you why. As most of you know, I grew up in a little town called Las Vegas and I saw the effects of having, and even in those days, some form of Keno monitor in various stores, outlets and so on, and people would hang around watching it. They'd come in specifically to watch it. And the concern I have is it's one thing if the management has the monitor in a back room, they're checking on it, they're verifying what the numbers were and them coming out front and making say, okay, here's what it was, blah, blah, blah. But if you have a monitor there that others can see, a very big monitor, it's very similar to what they do on the gambling halls and the casinos. And now people come in, stand around, watch what's going on. I'm not saying they will. It is a concern to me because it's different than saying, okay, we're allowing them to sell Keno or other, uh, gambling, uh, chits and whatever. Suddenly you're allowing people to come in and watch what's going on, which is very similar to what happens on a casino floor. So from that perspective, I have concerns. I talked with a woman who is involved with the casino, with the gambling commission, and she said in essence, they've approved it and we basically don't really get much choice in saying, fine, use the, you can have the monitor, but you can't tell them where they can place it or anything else. You can suggest it, but the outlet doesn't have to abide by your suggestion. And to me, that's different than what we originally approved for allowing Keno and other forms of gambling to take place or per, user, uh, customers' purchase. So that was the concern I was raising. I don't know if any of you have any concerns like that, but my concern, I wanted to just add.
Um, I, I've only seen Keno at some restaurants, I suppose. Um, maybe I'm assuming too much, but, um, I would think that the establishment would be aware that it might attract people to hang out if people would hang out at the gas station, but, I mean, who knows? But, um, you know, if they're prepared to deal with that, then, I mean, it, it, it could be a benefit to their business and if they need to, I don't know, increase that somehow and Keno is the answer, um, I suppose it's okay unless we have to ask them things like, do you have, I don't know, is it a security concern or is it a loitering concern? Do you know what I mean?
A loitering at the, uh, donut counter is, uh, burn. No, not mine. I'm, uh, I, I don't know, I, I tend to agree with Aaron on that one. I, I, I'm at a loss. I've never actually played Keno and I have yet to go into that store, so I'm, I've struck out twice on this topic. So, uh, to me though, it seems like it is a benefit to their business and if it's something that they're aware of and going at their eyes open on. And we have very little recourse to top it all off. I'm of the opinion that, um, that we don't need to take action or shouldn't take action.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that I also spoke and I'm surprised that you say that you don't have any, um, control over it because I, I was under the impression when I spoke with this woman that you actually, the board can vote, uh, actually, or send a letter saying that they are in favor of alpaca or whatever the place is, putting in a Keno, um, screen, I guess, monitor, but that you can ask them to specifically not put it, like, do not put it towards the front of the store because you don't want people loitering on the sidewalk just sitting there watching it through the window. Um, that you can say the board is, you know, is fine with this happening as long as this is put towards the back of the store and you can put some caveats to that. They don't necessarily have to follow that, but she said typically these businesses want to do good business in town. If the town feels strongly that they will follow through, so I leave that to the board if there's any specific things you would want to mention to them. Um, she also did say that they come in either weekly or bi-weekly to check, to make sure that they are not violating anything that the town has asked them to do. So I don't know if she told you that, that's what she told me.
Yeah, she, I, she did tell me those things. The concern I have is, as I was talking with her, it's like, okay, suddenly we have monitors, which had never been brought up previously, but, and what I don't know is where this leads to next. So my concern is setting guidelines and saying, okay, it's not much we can do, but our recommendation is along these lines. But I, again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see over time you get a creep, creeping situation where we allow this, then we allow that, then, these things can happen. So that's what was bothering me. I don't mean to stand on a soapbox regarding it, I'm just, I was concerned when I saw it because I watched, growing up, people in grocery stores and other places. Of course, I grew up in an era where they truly had a one-armed bandit, but that's very different today.
So I guess I do have one question then. Um, so if this was something that we didn't specify any kind of, I don't know, guideline or rule for, what happens if, let's say they do put in a Keno monitor and this is a weird group of people standing on the sidewalk staring through the windows at it? Like, is there anything we can do about that after the fact or, I, I don't even know how popular Keno is because I, I've never really done it.
I think it's pretty popular.
I have no idea around how popular. I'm not sure if there's much we want to do, but the question in my, that I have as a concern is if we don't say something now, much like you were saying, are we foreclosed from saying anything in the future? And I don't know. I really don't know.
I think, I think like, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I think, like you said earlier or like Treg was saying, there's really nothing you can do to stop them from putting it in. You would have to have a really big reason to stop, um, them from putting it in. If, if you feel strongly about them displaying it in the back of the store or something to that nature, like I said, you could certainly write that. Otherwise, um, she did say if there was an issue or we had ongoing problems that even though they come to visit, whatever, I said, I think it's bi-weekly, um, the store, that if there are any issues that we could reach out to her directly. I think they're very careful, they want to do good business with the towns. Um, I'm only going by what she's telling me, but I would assume that is the case. So I can't imagine the state would want to continue to allow something that was getting into a real problem, but.
And, and my preference on it would be not in the front window of the store- And, and my preference on it would be not in the front window of the store, so you can stand on the sidewalk.
Well, that was the whole point, I'm like, that's a good point.
My guess, a personal preference, you know, if it was in the store, so you stood and going back to the donut counter and watch the number change, um, I think it's a benefit for the store, and, um, I don't see a detriment to the town in that side, um, still not to be playing, but I think it's just, it just seems like it's, I don't know, I, I think that my, my preference would be not displayed like a billboard with the numbers changing on the sidewalk, but I don't even feel strong enough to make a motion to regulate that.
Is this the fir, would this be the first establishment to have Keno in Millis?
No.
No.
It'll be, it would be the first one, I believe it's the first one with a full monitor. They have Keno to go at, I wanna say it was one stop, because they have to send this to us whenever it's going into town. I'm not, and obviously some of the restaurants have it, I think Naffa Tandy's does, if I'm not wrong, I don't remember, I know they have it in bars sometimes, but I know the Keno to go is a little bit different, this is more of the full version, where, like I said, people are standing, but like Craig said, maybe they get an extra cup of coffee and do it, I don't know.
Okay.
I would tend to agree with both of you, Craig and so on, but I just wanted to bring it up, because I'm gonna see what happens in the future. If it begins becoming an issue, not just here, but going into other stores and so on, at least we now have an awareness. And that is a concern to me, that we be aware and knowledgeable. Okay? So, enough time spent on it, but I just wanted to get that out there.
Fair enough.
Board committee liaisons are meeting updates. So, do either of you have any committees, or is anything you've been to?
I, I do. I, I unfortunately missed the Economic Development Committee, because we had an unexpected vacation, first time in a long time, so I'm typically always free, but I missed that one. And it was a live meeting, not a Zoom meeting, so I couldn't have even zoomed into it, so, um, I'll get the minutes and read them over until the next one. Also, the PBC meeting, we had a meeting on the DPW, and putting it simply, everything's on track, it's moving forward, there's always a typical construction headaches that you get, but there's nothing that is going to play havoc with a schedule or budget, so it's the typical construction problems that seem like the end of the road during the project, but in hindsight have minor impact. Change orders are under control, um, everything else seems right with it. I also attended the affordable housing, um, presentation that was done, I don't know if the real estate committee did, it was quite good. They, uh, they talked really about bringing affordable housing to towns, and it takes, plan, partners, um, desire among select board and others in town to do it, and then, of course, money and land. So, uh, it is really the money and the land are less important than the desire, the leadership, and the partnerships. So it was, it was a useful piece, I plan to talk to Bob Weiss about it a bit more, because I think they gave a good groundwork of how you can go about attracting it. Midway's doing some pretty spectacular projects, it looks like, um, other towns they cited did some, actually, we were down in Easton a while back and saw one of them, we didn't think it was affordable, we thought it was 100% affordable, and we thought that it was, um, pretty high-end places, so we were surprised at how nice it looked. A lot of these were, um, uh, um, old factories and stuff that have been converted, we don't have that luxury, but we do have other options that you can go with. So it was a very interesting presentation. If, uh, they sent a video link, I don't know if it was sent to everybody here, but it was a good, good thorough one-hour, and I encourage you to watch it if you haven't seen it.
Ms. Underhill, anything?
Um, I did attend a capital planning meeting, um, and we just kinda went over, um, everything for, within the next year, um, that was on the plan, and that, uh, we're, we're meeting again on Monday, and the departments that are supposed to get back to the committee with any prioritization, or corrections, or additions to, you know, what the needs are, so that we can go through that more completely.
Okay. I don't know if I went over it last time, I met with the Charles River Ocean Control District, there was nothing particularly new there, there was another meeting coming up tomorrow, and I guess a day or two, I can't remember, but it was tomorrow or the next day, but anyway, I will go over that when we get the next meeting. Otherwise, there was nothing really new for any of the, I can lose my mind. Energy management talked about a few things, but again, it's trying to put together, trying to put together information for the residents on such things as heat pumps, the trade-offs on how to handle multi-fuel situations, and so on. The problem we're facing is, any everywhere, basically, has to do with the fact that heat pumps have gotten better, and that's basically thinking of your air conditioner, and you know how it throws hot air out the back end and cool air into the house, well, heat pump does that, but it also allows you to reverse it, so in the wintertime, the hot air goes into the house. That's the simplistic way of describing it, but that's basically what happens. The problem is that that process only works down to temperatures of around 28 degrees or so. If you get much colder than the mid to low twenties, a heat pump is very inefficient, uh, at least as presently designed. They're getting some that are not so bad, but they're still a ways away, so what they're looking at are multi-fuel systems, where it's a combination of the heat pump, which from 28 to into the 40s is actually quite efficient, and then tying into that, say, a propane or a natural gas system, and then the heat pump and the natural gas system work together, and it knows when to cut in for a natural gas or propane versus going as a pure heat pump. And those systems are not significantly more expensive than just a straight heat pump, so that's what the committee is trying to get some pricing and understanding of, so that's one of the directions they're moving. Anyway, I'm sure that was just thrilling for everyone.
I'm gonna say that's gonna rival our Microsoft Azure meeting.
But we could go into it in terms of BTU trade-offs, but I chose not to do so.
I mean, said that, I am quite interested in the topic, but, well.
I, I have put at home if you need to, if you need to discuss it, Craig.
I may have to replace some ACs here, and I'm looking at those multi-fuels or hybrid fuels myself, but they're still a better way.
We love ours.
Now I've got the board meeting, committee set up a date for stormwater policy review workshop. We've talked about this numerous times, uh, but we really do need to have a meeting to go over the stormwater, um, review of the policy. And what I'd like is to try to set up a time that's convenient for all of us, and I tend to probably be more available than most of you, but I'm willing to go along with whatever you want, if we can work out a time or a date that makes some sense. So, please, let me know, is there a specific time or date where we might be able to get together and go over this? My guess is it's gonna take a couple of hours, as I recall, and Erin, you were involved when Jim was running this, there are a whole series of questions, excuse me, and issues that came up, and I tried to put out on my information sheets what these were and what we have to go over, but it's, you know, it's not trivial, because the policy, the way it's written, does require a lot of different comments to be made, you made quite a number of them when we went over it the last time, Erin, but I think it's important for us to go through them. Craig, you weren't a participant at that time, but as I recall, we had like seventeen, and I may be off a little, individuals who asked for a review, and what we found was the policy was very constricting, and not encouraging of people to make any changes to their existing stormwater system. And so it's in light of that, that we're looking at, thinking about changes, and looking at the implications of those changes.
Yeah, we're, we're talking evening day, what are we looking at?
Whatever, I can be flexible, so it's the two of you who are still working for a living, supporting me, that are.
Um, I, um, I can be fairly flexible, too, it's, I, it's just a matter of notice.
An evening, during the day, even a weekend, if you've got nothing going on, I'm sure you have nothing that goes on on the weekends, so.
I prefer not a weekend.
That's funny.
I'll say that.
Yeah, my wife just changed her work schedule, so she works Sundays, but, um, so other than Sunday morning, I prefer not a weekend also. I would say, I, I am quite busy till, really, the last week in September with, um, but evening and day meetings at work, so I wouldn't be able to get out of the office, but come October, things settle down dramatically. Dentist appointment, but other than that, things have gone quite a bit.
Well, do you wanna schedule something for the first full week of October?
I mean, I could do something, I could do something, it's just a, I, I, I have an appointment at two o'clock on October 4th, so I'm gonna be home that day anyway, so if we wanted to put something in, do we have a select board meeting that night?
Um, you just know, I, there is a Capitol Committee meeting in the evening, um.
I mean, we could do it during the day that day, is what I'm saying.
Could you do it morning, Craig?
I'd do it at like three or four o'clock, like four, 3:30, four, four o'clock, someplace in there, I could probably make.
I can, so.
Or early, I could go either way.
I was gonna say, or before two o'clock, would you do morning?
Would you like to do it in the morning?
No, well, I can do, I could do Monday, October 4th at 3:30 on Zoom, or I could make arrangements for in-person, what are we doing?
It's no different between being if you want to do Zoom or whatever.
I'm just looking at the schedule, I'm looking at when, um, could we slide it to four, or else do the morning, because I, I'm afraid I won't make it back in time.
Okay, well, then morning, morning is, is fine, so whatever you guys want to like to.
10 to 12 or something like that?
Yeah, I could do that with 12, I'm gonna be both anyway, because I'm not driving down to Quincy to turn background and drive back to, uh, dentist, so.
And Erin, you said you prefer Zoom, or you?
Um, I don't know.
Well, I guess we could decide that after, if it's not.
I don't know, probably either way, it's probably easier for everybody if we did Zoom.
If you, if you decided upon the date, you could, you could decide at your next meeting on the 27th of September whether you want it in-person or Zoom.
Yeah, you're really up to decide now.
You don't have to decide that tonight, but set up the time is good.
Would we, would we be having people come in and per, come in to speak to us, is that it, or is this just we're reviewing letters?
No.
I think it's just the, we, including, um, Mike and Karen, would be the five people involved, yeah, and we'll go over, um.
You're just looking for the policy, correct?
Yeah, right. Then I'm fine with any, I'm, I'm fine with Zoom, one in person, if we're gonna have people come in to join us to protest or, uh, bills or anything, not protest, but protest or question their bills, I don't wanna do that over Zoom, I don't wanna have to do the, okay, unmute.
Yeah, that wasn't fun, yep, no, we did that, that was the hearings, but.
You, you are very lucky not to do that.
I am not doing something where I have to talk people through to unmute anymore, I'm done with those decades.
But Craig, we can, we can send you the policy.
Let's just plan on Zoom for now, unless something changes.
I'm fine with that, absolutely fine with that.
And Craig, we can certainly send you the whole policy in advance, so you can kinda see what we're talk, what they're talking about.
That would be good, yeah.
That would probably be helpful.
I, I have a copy of it someplace, but I have no idea where.
I'll send it again.
Okay.
I'll send it to all of you, for fun.
Very good.
I'll have electronic copy then, so I'll be able to find it again.
There you go.
Okay, um, so I have it scheduled for the 4th from 10 to 12.
Perfect.
I have it down for Zoom, for Teams, if you prefer.
I like Teams, but.
I like Teams myself, Erin, are you familiar with Teams?
I've never done it, but I'm willing to try, if you tell me what to do.
Right.
I know, I'm mostly a Google girl, sorry, but, um, I will give it a shot.
We can get you, you can download it, no big deal.
Okay, okay.
So.
All right.
That would be terrific, okay, so let's plan on that, and we'll deal with it then. If something changes, I, I will say, I'm, again, flexible, so please, don't think, oh my God, something's changed.
What time did we say, 10 to noon, or 9?
10 to 12.
10 to 12, yeah, 10 to 12, okay, I'll just put it in the calendar down, so nobody steals the time.
Okay.
Got my work calendar, so everybody sees it.
Okay.
Water sewer commitment?
Aye.
Actually, there are two water sewer commitments, Mike, I didn't know.
What?
I'm sorry, there are two different water and sewer commitments.
Yeah, I'm just gonna get to.
FYI, I wasn't bringing them up.
So, so let's get to the water and sewer commitments. So, Mr. Chairman, um, the first is the quarterly bill run commitment for water and sewer, uh, for a, uh, for water, it's 322,226 dollars and 48 cents. For, uh, uh, sewer, it's three, it's 335,622 dollars and 12 cents. Actual total, um, for all is 778,991 dollars and 48 cents.
Okay. I'm just trying to find my, I've lost my documents that I was working on, so I apologize.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the quarterly bill run commitment for August 2021, um, for the, is that 322,226 dollars and 48 cents for water, 335,622 and 12 cents for sewer, for a total of 778,991, um, and 48 cents for, uh, in total.
Second.
Okay, so we're seconded to approve the August 2, 2021 first quarter, um, water sewer department commitment to the collector in the amount of 77, 778,991 dollars and 48 cents. All in favor? Oh, I'll poll the board, I apologize. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes, I have one question, yes, what's on off, 566 dollars?
To closer, I believe there's a cost for turning on and off, because water.
Thank you, as it says, I thought it was some abbreviation or something.
Had I been forced to make a guess, that was going to be my guess. Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Jermaine? Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and then just, uh, just one more, and that's for the month of August, for the water and sewer, uh, commitment to the collector, for a total of 6,957 dollars and 33 cents.
I move that we approve the water and sewer commitment to the collector for August 2021 in the amount of 6,957 dollars and 33 cents.
Second. So we're seconded to approve the water sewer commitment to the collector for August 2021 in the amount of 6,957 dollars and 33 cents. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, draft minutes, did anybody bother looking at those?
It was short, this one was short.
I was gonna say, I don't think I've ever seen draft minutes this brief.
That was brief, I actually have the other ones I'm gonna send to you probably tomorrow, because, um, those are done as well, and I just forgot to put them in here.
Well, I can't prove them now, if I have to tomorrow.
No, you can't, so, but FYI, hopefully these are coming.
Okay, um, I'll take a motion on the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the select board meeting on August 23rd, 2021.
Second. We're seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting, board meeting for August 23rd, 2021. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, and it's approved. There was one typo in there, and I've forgotten where it is, but it's not a big deal.
Oh, I'll look at it.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to comment on? Well, we're out at a reasonable hour, I will take a final motion. Move adjourned.
Second.
We're seconded to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, meeting adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you, have a good night, guys. Thank you, have a good night, guys.